Everybody, thank you for coming to CPO8's candidate forum. We hope you have a lot of questions today, that you've learned a lot today. And I want to introduce you. By the way, is there anybody here who doesn't know what CPO8 is? Okay. CPO8 stands for Community Participation Organization. And our job is to sort of stay on top of things that are going on in our district, in our community, in our city. So that's what we do. So today, we're staying on top of it. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about the forum. We're going to... Our four candidates are here. Gray Brown is going to do the moderating. He's done a lot of this before, so he knows how to do it. Okay, he's done a lot of moderating for county commissioners' elections. Very good. Okay. So we're getting started a tiny bit late, so I think we'll turn this over to Gray right now. And he will tell you exactly how it will work. And after the forum finishes, we'd like you to stay, talk with the candidates one to one, and have some refreshments. All right.
I'm gonna try this without a microphone. Can you folks hear me okay? She tells me I have to do it through the video.
Oh.
Okay, is that... That's on? I really don't like microphones. As Linda said, my name's Gray Brown. I'm gonna moderate this, try to keep the movement along a little bit. The way we're gonna work it, this format is the same format that the women voters use for any forums that they do. CPO8 being technically under the auspices of the county, the county requires that of the women voters' format. So this is the basic format we're gonna use, and that's where it comes from. Got a number of questions up here, the people have filled out on a card that I'll ask. Don't be surprised if I paraphrase your question a little bit, etc. If you recognize your question, and I've done a lousy job of paraphrasing it, feel free to throw something at me, and I will try it a little bit better. We're gonna start off with each candidate giving a one-minute intro on themselves and why they're running, basically say whatever they want to. Then we'll drop into the questions. Each candidate will get one minute to answer the question, and we're gonna move down the line, who gets first stab at the question. Because the county messed up the timing on this, the school district, because we only got an hour. So the way we figured the best way to do that, most of these candidates, while they're not walking in lockstep with each other, they generally share the same philosophy. So each person will have an opportunity to directly answer a question. If anybody disagrees or has something that they want to add to it, they'll have a minute to do that. But for the sake of time, you don't need to hear basically the same thing four different times. Try to be reasonably considerate. We'll run through those questions. If you think of additional questions as you go along, I think there are cards scattered around, and there are a couple of people who will bring those cards up. Who are those people? They hear Vaughn, Posey, Ray, or Dan, catch their attention, she'll bring the card up, and we will certainly work it in. So you're not limited, as I said, if something comes up, something occurs to you while they're talking, by all means, jot it down and get it up to us. We'll rotate through, who gets the stab at each question, just run right down the line of the table. We'll do that until just a little bit, four or five o'clock, then each candidate gets one minute to sum things up. I think Linda wants to do another quick pitch for CPO8. And then we'll leave that room for about another half hour. After that, help yourself and goodies over there. They'll be able to stay around as long as they lead through, with one exception. Katie, down at the end, has a mother that she has to pick up and ask her to get out of here by 5:15. She's real people, she's got families to deal with. Also, one other thing you should be aware of, Katie and Ariel are both, have been dealing with some health stuff recently. Katie's had a lousy month the last couple of weeks. Particularly, be gentle with her. She's extending herself considerably to be here today, but anyway. And if we do have to take a break for two or three minutes, somewhere along the line, one of them is gonna wave at me, we'll just take a break. Eat all of it, is what we ask. That's about it. Great. You can add anything you want.
People, through the restrooms, they're through that door, through the back end, there's people through that door, John, to the left, you're there.
Yep, they got some cables blocked off the rest of the schools, so just go the only way you can. Good point, Linda. I'm an old guy, I should be sensitive to that.
Great. One other thing, is that, that's probably the timing.
Good point.
I'll give a ten second, then ask you to be the timer for it. I'll give a wave of my hat for ten seconds before, and then one minute I go, "Time!"
And John, do the stat.
Fifty-nine seconds.
It's that one hour limit we've got. So anyway, we'll start off with, well, Katie, you're running for mayor, so you get to go
With a microphone, that hopefully means all of you can hear me. With apologies, I jotted this down because all of this is a little nerve-wracking. So here we go. Hi, I'm Ariel, and I'm running for mayor. Saying that is starting to feel a little less strange. I really appreciate all the wonderful support that we've gotten so far along this journey together. I'm fed up with the way our city has been listening to developers instead of the people who elected them. And it's time for us to change that. I can't promise that I'll have a polished answer to all the questions today. And I'll tell you right now, there are things that I don't know yet, but I care enough to learn. We're not gonna solve anything here today with one-minute answers, but this can be how the conversation starts. You have my commitment to keep partnering with you, ask the experts, and get creative. We all have a place in choosing how our tax dollars are spent, what priorities we focus on, and how we move forward together. This community matters to me, and there's nowhere else I'd rather live. I'm sure that my kids will recognize home when they're grown.
All right, my name is Mandy Hagedorn. I'm excited to be here with you today as a candidate for North Plains City Council. I'm a 14-year resident and deeply invested in the long-term success of the place that we call home. Like many of you, I voted against the North Plains, or the UGB expansion, and I decided to run for city council because we have an opportunity to bring in strong leadership that listens to our residents and delivers value back to the community. And that's exactly what I do for a living on a day-to-day basis. My career's been built on listening, collaborating, and problem-solving, and these skills I plan to bring to the council. My commitment to you is simple, creating clear lines of communication to share your concerns or wishes, collaborating to turn those ideas into action, ensuring every goal is publicly vetted with clear lines of accountability, and prioritizing our town core before we invest in developing our precious land. Thank you.
I'm Mayor Dungrow, and I've never done this before, so bear with me. So in May of '24, our voters overwhelmingly turned down Measure 34, 327. Instead of respecting the voters, the city just went ahead and tried to overturn the referendum process with HB 4026. So I'm running because I believe in giving the citizens of North Plains a real voice in government, and because this is my home. I'm a disabled military veteran, a small-business owner, and technical sales manager. I understand the importance of working collaboratively to find solutions that, you know, everybody can win, and having common goals. My vision for North Plains is, you know, we prioritize smart growth, build vibrant communities, pedestrian-friendly streets, affordable housing options, and supporting local businesses. So I'll work to ensure transparency and accountability in the city government, empowering all of us to participate in shaping our future.
Hello, excuse me, I'm Katie Redding, and I'm readying for city council because I want to make smart growth decisions with transparency and engagement from our whole community, both inside and outside our city limits, and those who voted yes and who voted no. I want good contracts being made that meet what constituents are saying is needed in our community. I want to work with the state and county to preserve our small town while making sure we are funding ourselves to not be swallowed up in land grabs. I'm here to listen to you all and ensure your vision, wants, and priorities are being carried out on city council.
Wow, and they all did it in less than a minute. Well done, guys, well done. That's tough. Okay, first real question. Ariel, since you are brave enough to run for mayor, you get to handle the first question.
All right.
Is improving the existing town a higher priority if you expand the city?
Here we go. So absolutely, I would say that all four of us are well-aligned with this not being a situation where we need a giant UGB expansion, where we need hundreds of acres brought into our town, where we need to change the character of what it's gonna look like driving down Main Street. We have so many opportunities within our current city limits to really revitalize our downtown, to invest in services that our community needs, to make it more walkable and bikeable, and make sure that we are accommodating all the increased traffic in a safe and sensible manner. So absolutely, I will come out 100% and say that our first steps are going to be within North Plains city limits with sensible smart growth.
Anybody have anything they want to add? This question would be aimed at Mandy, going down the line. If all of you win your elections, what sort of changes might we see in North Plains, both in approach to how the city is managed, any specific changes you'd like to see made?
I think a critical first step that we all need to work on is doing some citizen listening and engagement. We really need to do our due diligence and walk a mile down the sidewalks and experience what it's like to be, just to have a day in the life of a current resident, right? I think we need to do a, just make an opportunity list and understand where the, what opportunities we need to prioritize. We've been hearing that there's a lot of areas where there's scary crosswalks and services that were being requested, but by and large, we just need to take, do some citizen learning and compile it and prioritize it to maximize impact. I also think there's an opportunity to make engaging with the city a little bit easier too, and that's something we need to look forward to.
Anybody have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, the thing that, when I was asked to join, that they sold me on is this concept of actually having a priority list and actually working on it, because that's what I do in my day job. I feel like having a task list and actually executing on it and showing the city what we're doing, the citizens what we're doing, would be a big step forward, in my opinion.
Anyone else want to add to that? Pretty good. Erin, you're up. Oh, I'm sorry, Erin. Erin, you can see, go ahead.
Sorry. So just to add on to what you guys have said, which is fantastic, I think one of the first changes that I would like to see happen is, anyone who has attended a city council meeting knows how that feels right now. It's not the most productive use of your time, you don't necessarily feel heard, you wait in line, and you get your three minutes, and you say your piece, and that's about it. There's no dialogue, there's no one interested in having a conversation about what obviously was important enough for you to come and spend time on your Monday evening. So I would like to make sure that the community feels like a welcome and encouraged participant in all parts of the city council process. I also feel like we need to meet people where they're at, not expect them to show up at Jesse May's, but have other ways of engaging, getting those ideas and feedback that are such a huge part of us moving forward.
Moving on to the next one. Now you're up, Erin.
All right.
If we don't bring surrounding land into the North Plains UGB, what stops Hillsborough from approaching right up next to us?
It's a great question. So just to be clear, I am not a land use attorney, nor do I know very many of them, but nothing, to be honest, Hillsborough's gonna do what Hillsborough's gonna do. But that doesn't mean that we, as citizens of North Plains, should not be going to the governor. We should not, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be standing up for what's right. You know, I mean, not to be political, but to be a little political, anybody that's ever, you know, that grew up in Oregon or has lived here very long, has seen all kinds of crazy stuff happen. You know, we've been through the spotted owl issues with the timber, we've been through, you know, some of the forest management issues that I grew up with, we've been through farmland issues. My family was farmers for, you know, most of their lives, down a little bit south of here. So yeah, the Hillsboroughs can make those attempts. That doesn't mean that we can't stand up. We can also partner with our surrounding cities like Banks and, sorry, Banks and Coronado Forest Grove, all the other cities, and try to work together.
Anything to add to it?
I talk a lot, guys, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to take a minute and point out that when we're talking about Hillsborough potentially making this land grab, which affects us here in North Plains, it's a differentiating factor. When you're talking about the four people sitting up here versus the other four who you'll see on the ballot in November, our current city council, our current mayor lobbied for, in favor of SB 4, which is the, which is the way that Governor Kotek is able to leverage, potentially taking those 300 and some odd acres of land next to us. So what do you think's gonna happen if the four of us aren't sitting on the council next year, and we know that our current council, we know that our current mayor tried to get that bill passed? Worth thinking about.
Hey, Katie, you're up. By the way, Katie gets her own mic for her disease control protection. It's not that they don't like her or anything, just try not to get sick like she's been. She's a great worker. This is one from the audience, I'm gonna paraphrase slightly. The concept of residents who aren't actually within the city limits but live adjacent to North Plains, people, other people in 97133, how do you feel about them being involved in city policies? Let's just leave it at that. How do you feel about them being, having input on city policies?
So I was raised in the Mountaindale Valley, so it's actually really important to me. My mom and dad still live up there, and most of my very close family and friends. And the water treatment plant that I believe was proposed for the LaCroy report would have affected them greatly, and all the traffic coming, that's their only way into their homes. I feel like if something's gonna affect your life that much, you deserve to be at the table and you deserve to have a voice. I feel really strongly about the outsiders having a voice, because we're a whole community, and, you know, it's reciprocity. You know, so far as also Aaron Nichols running his CSA, like, he provides food for us. You know, it's a, it's a, sorry, guys, I'm really muddling this up with this head cold. I do believe they have a place at the table.
Anyone want to add to that?
You guys want to, or I'm gonna raise my hand again? Save me from myself. Okay.
All right, like I said, talking about my apologies. So my viewpoint on this, and I think it's one of the core concepts that the four of us share, is that we are one community. Whether we happen to live inside city limits, whether we're in our surrounding farmlands, whether we're at the hill, we are one community. We share schools, we share so many other priorities, that it's just wrong for us to be the only ones voting on these topics and making these decisions that affect their quality of life as well. So rather than there being a huge dividing line of who's North Plains and who's not, and whether North Plains is first and Farmers are second, that's silly. We need to be working together. We need to heal the divisiveness that's happened over this past year, and we need to make sure that we are prioritizing what's right for our community as a whole.
You see why Ariel wants to be mayor. Hey, you could do it for her, you get to talk again.
Now I get to talk.
Do you support getting a grocery store in town? How would you feel about getting that done?
Well, I would certainly love to have a grocery store in town, so it's a little easier to pick up milk when we're out, but I've got two kids, that happens a lot. But I'll be really honest with you, that it needs to be the right store. It needs to be the right fit for our community, it needs to be in a location that makes sense. And I'm not sure where we've been talking about siteing it is what's gonna turn out to be the right fit. There's already so much traffic there on Lenco, we need some different ways of managing those people turning in and out. We also need to make sure that a grocery store is going to be affordable. One of the primary reasons why we need one locally is to address the lack of transportation for our senior population. We've got about 15% of our residents who are affected by fixed incomes, who are affected by lack of transportation, and I would love to see us maybe find a larger site that's still nearby, which can cite a larger store and lower prices.
Comments or comments?
I'll just add, so I grew up, not here, but in a very small town, very similar, I actually grew up about five miles outside. So going into town was, you know, once we were lucky enough about it, so you did most of your grocery shopping. But we went to the, you know, the local grocery stores, and we had the IGAs and the other ones, and they were, they were great for our, our community. The fact that it's taken this long is a significant problem, in my opinion, and this comes back to, we need to start managing things. We need to start being transparent, hey, this is what's taken so long. And then if there's a problem, I'm gonna bet that there's probably at least a dozen people in this room that know how to solve that problem, but I don't think anybody's asked. I think the reason I ended up up here is because somebody asked me, and otherwise I never would have done this. So if somebody just asks and says, hey, who knows how to solve this problem? Even if they don't, they might know somebody, and so we need to work together on this.
Anyone else that want to add to that? Mandy, you're up for this one. This is another one from the audience, and I'm gonna paraphrase a bit, so if I don't get it the way you wanted it, as I said, throw something at me. Water is a real issue in North Plains. North Plains has no water source of its own, has a couple reservoirs, but no source of its own. All of its water comes from Hillsborough. High Tech uses a lot of water. What are your thoughts regarding the impacts of North Plains not having its own water supply, being dependent on Hillsborough, yet moving towards an industry that uses a lot of water? And Mandy, you're on.
Sounds expensive. Sounds expensive. We do not have our own water sources, true, we buy our water through a middleman, and our utility does not control generation of water. That's just the fact. So as we're looking to expand and, and you hear when the lanes of data centers, etc., I mean, that's just the fact of life, of why you need to vote for us.
Anyone want to add to that? Erin?
If you think your water bill's high, we can get your electric bill on the data center comes in. I have to work in tech, I work for a chip company. I know how high it's gonna be. I've watched the power cost go up significantly in Oregon, and I love tech, don't get me wrong, like, I love what I do, my job's great, but I don't want North Plains to be attackable. I'm fine bringing jobs, we'll just bring the right jobs. The other thing that I'll point out is, if you start looking around the industry, we're starting to see more and more, you know, more and more places start to run out of power. California's a great example. We do not need to be the next California. Let's build infrastructure first before we go do other stuff. Let's figure out what we actually need before we invite other industries in that we can't support.
Anyone else on that one? Erin, you're up.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have known.
So one of the concerns that I've heard about the potential data centers and manufacturing and the industrial uses for this massive expansion that's been proposed, when I'm talking with folks who live outside the city, when they talk about water, their concern is with potential pollution and our groundwater. And the reason why our water bill is so high right now, the reason why we don't have a source of our own water, is because of industrial pollution that happened previously. So I would be incredibly cautious with any kind of development that would put us at risk of remaining groundwater sources being destroyed by some corporate accident. So I think that's gotta be part of the consideration as well.
I need to diverge just a little bit from the format. Ariel, you mentioned what had happened in North Plains is full water supply. Sounds like you've got the background on that. Can you give a quick 30-second summary of what happened?
So I will never pretend to be an expert on all the details here. The high-level elevator pitch on that is that it has to do with creosote, and a company that was here many, many years ago, I want to say it was almost 50 years ago.
Corbin Baxter.
See, you know this accent. And so that having seeped into the ground and enhanced into the groundwater, tests have revealed that our water here is no longer safe. So we buy essentially retail-priced water from Hillsborough, which is great, because I like showering. But the downside of that is that it is so much more expensive for our community. I would also be curious about how those contracts were set up initially, whether there's potentially some room there to reevaluate, and to be good partners with our neighboring cities that, you know, maybe we don't need to pay retail price, maybe there's some conversation there. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry to diverge, I just think that history is worth people knowing. Remember when that happened many years ago? Erin, you're gonna get a question from the audience that you absolutely do not know the answer to, but you get to hypothesize it. Why aren't all of the candidates in this meeting?
I can't speak for anybody else, I'm here, we're here. The invites went out, and people choose where they're gonna be. But if I could just kind of diverge, I don't know about the other candidates outside of this room, but I know that, you know, several have been knocking on doors, talking to people, meeting people. I met some really interesting people here. There's a lot of cool people in North Plains that I thought I knew people until I started knocking on the doors, and nobody has yelled at me yet, which is really surprising, because I was very nervous, I do not like this. Big introvert, so it was, my wife had to drag me. But I met a lot of really nice people. One of the big things is, why didn't anybody else come knock on my door? So same thing, I don't, I don't know why they might have, and I would never want to disparage anyone. I think they're all good people, but we just have a difference of opinion, and I hope we can all work together when this is done.
Anybody else have any KBS's? Towers. Okay, Katie, you're up. I'm gonna ask the audience, why is it important that we vote for all four of you?
It's important so that we gain a majority vote on city council. That way, we're able to, just literally when we vote, we will have more votes to stop the UGB, or to slow the UGB, or to make more voices heard on council. Because that is, I think, our top, one of our top priorities is, whatever you guys want is what we're going to do on council. So if the 72% vote still stands, we're going to try our hardest to stop that UGB and make better choices.
Anybody else want to add to that?
So yes, as Katie said, we have a really unique opportunity here in one election cycle to move the needle and make meaningful change. Everybody on the city council plus the mayor gets a vote. So the four of us sitting here would be four out of seven, which is enough, although we plan to partner with the existing members of council, and I would certainly rather reach across the aisle and do something that makes sense for everybody on topics where we disagree too strongly, like the urban growth boundaries, for example, by electing all four of us, that is the only way that we can, with confidence, say that we're putting a pin in the UGB, and that we're listening to our community, we're doing what makes sense for the voters. So all four of us across the finish line in November is the goal. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Mandy, you're up. Would you support some version of the UGB expansion, or are you opposed to any expansion at all?
Are you done? Okay.
It could get real complicated.
I'm sure, you, you almost looked like you were gonna continue talking there, so I was waiting.
There was more to the question, I'm excited.
Listening, okay. I think, so we, we need to grow smart, so no, I'm not against gross, growth, but it's smart growth, right? So going to accommodate community needs, prioritizing building in-town core, leveraging resources that we have existing before we have to consider, consider or entertain consuming any of our existing land. So I'm not against growth, just as long as we do it smart and, and think about it first.
The person writing this question, this is why I was pausing, said they'd like to hear each hear each candidate respond to that. We're okay on time.
Okay. I think that's great.
Okay, so I'm, yeah, I'm not opposed to, to expansion if we do it the right way. My question is, why are we growing? So this, again, I work in sales, so every question starts with why. Why are we doing this? Why do we need to do anything? Because that's the first question you're asking sales. If there's a reason to grow, great, let's talk about it. But what does growth look like? What does that mean? Personally, I would prefer to limit the growth on farmland, because I'd like to keep it around for a while, because I'd like to be able to eat. But, but really, also, we just need to think through, what does a good growth process look like? What are we growing for? Who are the people that we're trying to help? Are we, you know, if we're looking at housing? Are we looking at one type of housing? Are we looking at, you know, housing that's gonna work for everyone? If we're looking, you know, again, if we have land within the city, why are we not looking at that? That's a huge question that I have. So my answer is yes, both and always, but we just need to ask the right questions.
If I have enough, can I?
I think I'll go first. I think there's that picture. This kind of is a key question.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. Assuming I can find the card, I'll phrase it the same way. Do you support some version of UGV expansion, or are you opposed to the entire concept of expanding the UGV?
Thank you. I'm not opposed to growth. Like we've all said, it needs to be smart, it needs to be affordable, and it needs to be with the input and the engagement of our community and what you guys want.
Ariel? Do I need to reply? Sorry, I like to use a few.
That's all right. I'm sure you guys want to hear my voice again. So here's the thing. It is not a matter of there being no growth at all, but it does need to be well planned, well understood, and aligned with community priorities. We were talking with our current council now, their, their plan was to more than double the size of the city, and they didn't even know how much it would cost. They didn't do the necessary research upfront to realize that it was gonna cost us taxpayers $190 million, not an overstatement, for roads, water, sewer, initial development, maintenance. These are permanent costs that have to be defined for any kind of project that we're undertaking in the future. Before we're talking about growth, before we're talking about development, it needs to fit our long-term goals for the community.
Again, diverging from the format, but I see this as a real key issue. Mandy, you have something you wanted to add?
It's, it's kind of adjacently related, but I do think that there's some knowledge that we gained by dusting off our, partnering with our local communities and, and learning from how they're growing. I'm thinking of places like Carlton, for example, that has really revitalized our downtown, and it still looks like Carlton, and it's maintained its same character. And, and of course, we need to look at how we can invest in our own, our own businesses here and keep those businesses vibrant and still growing too, so we can pay for growth that we need.
Go ahead. I see this is a real key issue, so.
Sorry. So yeah, just one thing to add to that. So Ariel started on the path of the liabilities, the long-term liability, so I won't go into details, but if, if you're really interested in this, you really want to get some details, you should look into what, Brin Hill, the long-term liability on Brin Hill and Sunset Ridge is. And I'm happy that we have neighbors there. I'm not disparaging that. What I'm saying is, that's going to cost the city a lot of money. If we don't budget for that, it's just like, I'd like to retire at some point in my life. If I don't budget for that, I'm not gonna be able to retire. I'm gonna end up working until I'm, you know, forever. So I have to budget for that. And the city needs to do the same thing with these long-term liability maintenance. That is a huge issue. This is something I think about with my own house, this is something the city should be thinking about in a much larger scale. This is what farmers think about. This is what everybody thinks about.
Anybody else want to add to that? Happy with, and I lost track of who's up next.
I think it's him.
I don't think it's me.
I think it's him.
She's as bad as I am. Okay, Ariel, you're up. The city, this is a paraphrase of a question from the audience. The city has started what they're referring to as a relook process, an expanding UGV. They've appointed a committee to look at it and are, well, just starting that process. What do you think of the, of the process that they're using? What would you like to do differently than the way they're going about doing it?
Well, first of all, 72% of the voters, it turned out, which was a larger number than normally happens for a primary, voted against the UGV expansion, I think that probably says enough. But beyond that, I'm not sure why we have so many committees, to be honest. You know, I was vice commander of American Legion, I've done a lot of board type work, and it seems like we have an awful lot of committees. And I'm not the smartest guy in every room, but it does seem like common sense that if we're spending that much money and that much city employees' time and the council's time, something doesn't add up. Also, we have the same people on the committees, which is concerning. So my question is, why do we need a relook? Everything's back to why. Like, why are we doing this? Why would we do anything? Because I'm not 100% clear on what the goal is, especially after the voters said no. So that's my thing is, I think we just need to ask, why are we doing this? And take a step back and relook at the committees. Let's have a relook on committees.
A relook is a relook. Anyone want to add to that?
Of course.
So, you know, Aaron, to your point, the, the relook committee is made up largely of the same types of folks and many of the exact same individuals who were involved in the first round. And unfortunately, that also includes some conflicts of interest. You know, I think any committee that we are putting together that's going to make decisions for our community needs to be truly impartial, needs to not have folks who are going to make money if we make a particular decision, who are not going to include members of the consulting firms who are getting paid to do this work. You know, we've already spent over half a million dollars on development planning, which the community has spoken pretty resoundingly with that 72% saying that's not what we want. So perhaps we need to stop throwing good money after bad and move away from a relook committee and more to a look forward committee.
Anyone want to add to that? Well, you see, Katie, where do you see the city of North Plains in 20 years? If you wave a magic wand and made it into whatever it could be in 20 years, hopefully it would be.
Oh, man. If it's purely my vision, it doesn't really work. It has to be our vision, first of all. But I would really hope that we're unified, it's safe, it's walkable, and it's livable. And in 20 years, I'd hope we'd have our grocery store that's affordable, with a pharmacy that would help serve a lot of our community members, more vibrant downtown, a lot more small businesses here that are helping fund our tax base. And still, hopefully, neighbors know neighbors. And there's, and in my quintessential world, before a city council meeting, you know, we would be bringing in our vegetables and whatever and exchanging them out front and having a positive experience before we walk in to talk about serious business.
Anyone want to add to that?
I just want to say if it takes us 20 years to build a grocery store, we might need a new city council.
True.
Ariel, you're up.
So piggybacking onto something that we have talked about before, all four of us who are sitting up here would rather be on our couch right now. And part of what I would like to see the next 20 years involving is us, you know, building up the next generation of leaders and getting more and more folks involved in this process as a whole, whether that's on a commission or a committee or serving on city council or volunteering or just coming and providing their ideas and their perspective. But in 20 years, we are gonna have such an incredibly vibrant community that is focused on what matters to us, this is gonna be the best place to live. We are gonna be the envy of bigger communities around us because we have made choices based on our people.
Anything else? Ariel, hold on to the microphone, because you're up. Burnt city council candidates, someone from your opposition, saying that you have no experience in city government. So why should we vote for you? What impact do you see that lack of experience have?
Well, that's a good one. Okay. So I actually have some notes on this one, because I figured it would come up. And experience seems to be pretty much the only drum that they're beating whenever folks are criticizing the four of us sitting up here. First of all, I would get curious about why that is the only thing they can bring up that is a detraction. But in general, qualifications to be a mayor or qualifications to be on city council are not the same qualifications as to be a city manager. We have fantastic, full-time, paid staff who are the experts in this space. Our roles are to be a guiding force. Our role is to connect with community, to represent our constituents, and make sure that those fantastic paid employees who are the experts are driving us in a direction that we all feel comfortable with.
Any additions to that? Ariel?
So, yeah, so I mean, again, I've worked on various volunteer-type work opportunities. I manage a large sales team. I am responsible for a very large portion of revenue for our division, and my travel budget is honestly as larger than the city's budget. I, my, I have run a massive national team. And all of us on this have different experiences in small business or larger businesses. I've been doing this for a long time. I ran massive teams in the military. This, this is a business role. We need people with business and farm and other experience on council. And by the way, in four years, hopefully, one of you will be up here, and I can ask you questions. But in all seriousness, I mean, I am serious about that. But, but like, the, the people that we need are the people with common sense and experience so that we can get the city back on the right path.
This is an interesting topic, because while our opposition has a lot, a deep work bench, working for the government and serving the city, but whereas that got us as well too. Or relooking, again, at the same topic, UGV, as Thor's TLA that, that's a bad TLA, it's getting a little bit old, and it's costing us money by the minute. So I wouldn't say that their experience has served them well, but, you know, and, and the experience that they really dragged us through asking us to vote on, vote on something that we really don't have a clear expected outcome of what it would deliver, it's costing you money, and it's essentially a blind, they're asking us to sign a blind check with our vote. There's no projected financial impact, that's really sound. They didn't do any quality of life or environmental assessments on us. So, you know, in the private sector, if we behaved in that fashion, that'd be grounds for dismissal.
So I have no experience running a city, because it's a volunteer position, so you usually do start right where we're starting. What I do have experience in is, when my daughter was born, she came out and had tremendous issues. And I have done so much research and education, and I am now an expert on her and her conditions. And I am vowing to you that that is the same dedication you'll get. I love to research, I love to be educated and learn, and that's what I plan to do to fill this gap of experience and ask questions to other people and other mayors, other city council members, and just collaborate.
Can I piggyback onto myself? So the other thing that I was going to add is that when, when we're talking about experience, I, I don't want to, I'm not a big fan of self-promotion here, but I want to brag on these three, that the amount of hours they have spent studying for this like it's the SATs, the hundreds of pages of city documents that they have read through, the podcasts, the books, the, the research that they are doing to get up to speed, even in areas that maybe aren't necessarily their responsibility to know all the facts, they are making sure that they have the knowledge to understand the issues and be able to ask the right questions.
And once again, I lost track. No, Ariel, you had the last first one. Was it Mandy? Who's up?
We failed the test. I don't remember.
It's one of these.
People want things like recenters, sidewalks, parks, et cetera. How do we make room?
Oh, this is an interesting question. And I remember having a conversation with this about my husband. You know, there's only so many ways that, we're limited with our tools and our toolbox and what we, how we can pay for things. We can tax, but there's only limitations there too. Oh, jeez. But essentially, what we really do need to, we can grow our small businesses, and that's one area that we've been kind of ignoring. I do think that there's opportunities for us to work with our economic development team, Dust on our playbook, and really, again, do some case study analysis on other neighboring communities, see what they do well, and how they're growing their town core. Again, I'm looking at Carlton, I'm looking at Forest Grove. There's a lot of restaurants going in, and they're maintaining their town character. But also, we need to nurture our current businesses, because they need some help to grow and sustain their business. And that's how we take care of paying for things.
That's my favorite topic, money. So here, here's the thing. Taxes from businesses come from profits, which come from sales. So we gotta get the right businesses in town, first of all. Second of all, we need to look at the budget. I mean, I'm not an expert on budgets, but I'm smart enough to run my own household with my wife, and I'm smart enough to run a, you know, a sales business and a small business, and I know our budget is full of holes. There's a lot of stuff in there that we're spending that doesn't even make sense. Why are we hiring consultants for a UGV relook, for example? If the voter said no, then that's probably a no. Let's look at how are we doing that? If you look at the revenue, most is from property taxes, and the next is fees. But the question is, with fees, just like taxes, because they can do fees without a vote, are the fees the right fees? Are they stopping people from starting businesses? And these are the questions, I don't have answers, I just have a lot of questions. But these are the questions I want to ask. Why are we doing this? I've asked these and gotten nowhere. And when I had to start my business, it was, I had to deal with all the fees. I got more.
Why am I not surprised? Anyone else want to add to that?
Raise your hand if you want to hear from me again.
Katie, do you have something you want to?
No, I want to hear from Ariel.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. So I think we've got several opportunities there. First of all, you know, the current projects that we have with the sidewalks are funded in large part by the gas tax, which, yes, it's a bummer when I feel up here in town, but largely, that is passive funding, if you will. It's people who are driving by on 26th on the way to the beach. It's not members of our community who are having to open up their pocketbooks and pay for this infrastructure. So I would get curious about what other options might fall into similar categories. I also think, you know, Aaron has talked a lot about this in the past, of streamlining small business permitting and, you know, being able to encourage more of those small businesses around town to start, to have, you know, people who already live here might want to start something if it were a little easier and if we had a mentorship program.
If we're done with that, do you think that puts her or not?
He's speechless.
How would you involve the community?
So previously, I was the vice commander for American Legion Post Six, which is as close as we have to an American Legion post here, because we're just not that big here. I, you know, I've been involved with my local church, and, you know, I volunteer with a, a number of different, different areas. This is really my biggest involvement, to be honest. I was surrounded. I was trying to just kind of fade off into the sunset, but apparently that was not in the cards. But we've lived, we've lived in this general area for about 15 years or so, give or take. And, you know, we really like being here. We walk our dogs all around the community. We spend a lot of time in cars, probably too much, and occasionally hit the road or last mile or just go say hi to people and meet different, deeper people around the city. I've not been on any committees. I've not been on any government positions. But I've been involved by, you know, starting a small business. I've people, you know, basically mostly started so people would come hang out with me. Just kidding. But it is a lot of fun. And so that's kind of how we've been. It's not a great answer, sorry. I didn't prep that one very well.
Katie, you're not for?
Yeah, I think this would be a good one for all of us to answer if you guys have the patience.
Sure. Yeah, by the way, we've got about two or three more minutes for questions.
Sure. So I've lived in North Plains my whole life, obviously, at Mountain Dale there and now back in the city. And I am part of St. Edward's Catholic Church. And my daughter has been a beneficiary of our benefit tea, but I also have chaired the tea and I volunteer with that quite a bit. But again, I've not been on any political committees. This is my first time stepping up into this big world.
Ariel?
Long time no talk. Okay. So this room particularly is very familiar because I actually was the North Plains Elementary BTO president. One of those things in my life where I seem to have a toxic trait of stepping up when there's nobody else to do a thing because it's important. And this was right as COVID was happening. You know, the kids were going through an awful lot of trauma. There wasn't a lot of joy happening and we had a ton of restrictions. So we had to get super creative about how we could make things fun and still keep it safe and within the rules. So you guys may remember a drive-through trunk-or-treat. It was really pretty cool. A great spring carnival that we had. Incidentally, that was right after I got a concussion. So, you know, we powered through and we get it done. I also walk and bike around town with my kids. I walk my giant golden retriever who thinks she's a lapdog. And one of my favorite things is getting to talk with people. You know, even if they're not folks that I know, the smile and the wave and, you know, talking about the weather because we all have so much in common. Even as our town becomes more diverse, even as there are new faces, I love these folks.
My volunteer work really correlates with my path of life and are, my husband and I are hobbies. So volunteer event coordination for the Ducks Unlimited and a lot of their local chapter activities. And one in particular, which is interesting, we have a charter business called Hillbilly Delight Sport Fishing. Our charter or our home base is out of Garvaldi, Oregon. Every year he does community service and participates in an event where all of our catch and proceeds to the event and turn it goes to Oregon Food Bank. And they are actually up to raising six digits of money that goes to Oregon Food Bank. And they also, he partners with a local company that does all the canning and tuning, the canning of the fish and it gets cascaded through our Oregon Food Bank network. So people actually get to eat what we catch. So there you go.
Katie?
She went.
Sorry, I'm getting old and forgetful. I think we're right at our times for this. We're going to, each of them is not going to be admitted to sum up us all. I've got a handful of questions here for the audience that we just ran out of time on. After they talk, each, we stop, get some food and you got a chance to put over your question and you get asked along the way. So anyway, let's do this in reverse order. Sorry, Ariel, you can't talk for another two minutes. Katie, one minute summary. Why? Why are you running, why should you vote for you? Whatever you want to say.
I hope you've seen my character tonight is one that wants full transparency to the public so you have all the information to make decisions so that we on city council can carry it all out for you. I want city council to have open discussions and the community to see us reach common ground. I welcome feedback and look forward to ongoing research, education and hard work to unite our small town.
Ariel?
All right. In case you missed this, I am not a politician. I'm just up here because I feel like I'm responsible to stand up for what I believe in. And I believe in smart growth and representative government. I don't have all the answers, but I do have a whole lot of questions and a few ideas that I'd like to share. I believe in our residents here in North Plains. This is our town. We have a responsibility to leave it better than it was handed to us. I mean, smart growth, we can all get behind and we all have a voice and our vote matters. I believe government is a responsibility, not a career or rotating position. For far too long, the same people have been on the city council, the mayor, the committees. And so if you want more transparency, accountability, growth that brings real jobs and if we have our way of thriving downtown, then vote for a new city council and mayor that will listen to all of you.
Well, thank you for joining us today and listening to what our team is all about. My name is Manny K. Goodorn and I am committed to bringing strong leadership to the city council, one that listens, one that turns your ideas into actionable plans that benefits us all, one that prioritizes transparency and accountability, one that focuses on the town core before developing any farmland. And I ask for your support of us to turn this vision into reality.
Hi. I'll be really honest with you guys about the choice that's facing voters in November. On one hand, you've got four people whose experience is part of the establishment that's created the situation we're in today. By consistently ignoring our voices and our votes, they've insisted on a plan that 72% of us rejected and they're still trying to force it through before we can vote them out. Or the other option is, these four folks, we're new to these roles, but we bring skills with us from our careers and from our lives and we actually care enough to listen. The four of us believe in civics, not politics. We're doing this for the right reasons, not because of ego and we won't sell out or choose big business over our community. Vote for the same and you'll get more of the same. Given that choice, I bet on change and us doing what comes next together. I hope you'll join me.
I think we have a couple of things she wants to say, but before she does, you got to put up with about 30 seconds of my philosophy. I'm surprised you'll be doing this. As she mentioned, over the last 40 years, I've been involved in a number of elections throughout the Washington County, commissioner election, city elections, initiative, additions, et cetera. One of the hardest things there, one of the most frustrating things, is getting people involved. Everybody might sit out there and write and moan, but very few people will be involved. The time that these four have already put in and the time that they've indicated they're willing to put in on the city council, we all owe them a huge thank you. Also, those of you sitting out here who spent an hour and a half on a beautiful fall day sitting here listening to them, I commend you. If everyone would get involved the way you people get involved, government at every level would be 100 times better. Thank you.
Hi, Gray.
I would like one more big round of applause of each candidate. And another one for Gray, please. Okay. I would like to also thank all of the CPO eight members who came today, planned this, put it all together, brought the food, put up the, just made it possible for you to be here. And I'd also like to encourage all of you, when you go out and leave here today, that you talk to your neighbors, you talk to your friends about what you heard here today. Because I think that will encourage everybody to get to the polls on November 5th and vote. Now, just one more thing to say about CPO eight. It's coming up on October 24th. We are going to have a joint meeting with CPO 14 and CPO 13. We've invited Alice Morrison, who is the co-chair of Friends for Family Farmers. And what she will be coming and doing, it's going to be a long meeting, it'll be two hours, but it's all about water. You heard a lot about water today and that meeting is going to focus on what the problems are, what our risks are, what the threats are and what we can do about it. So it's a virtual meeting. If any of you would like to attend and you don't think you're getting the email information from us, please, on your way out, sign up, give us your email so we can get you on the list so that you can dial it in that night and listen to what she has to say. I think it's going to be very, very informative. So with that, if you have more questions for the candidates and you'd like to have some refreshments, please join us. Thank you very much for coming.